Good morning. Good morning, and welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. Appreciate your patience, as had a little bit of a longer pre-council meeting. Like to welcome everybody here today. I would also like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Hyphen Nelson for the row call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith is absent today. Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you freely give us, Father. We just thank you for all the opportunities ahead. We do pray for your wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment on this council, the mayor, his administration, and all the city. Father, we just want you to know, Lord, we love you, and pray that we seek you in all that we do, and seek to honor and glorify you with all that we are. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and city council meeting held on June 20th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 16th through the 22nd.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor Ford.
Thank you. Before I got up here, Brett Johnson said fix my right collar, so I was at fixed. A little bit, yeah, thank you. I want to say something before we do the mayor's commendation. If I could, I want to congratulate Craig Scott, who was just elected to the president of Alabama Libraries Association.
Wow, congratulations. There you go, Craig.
So we'll be coming back with something soon, but that was an elected position, and I think you've held that position before.
No.
No, first time, okay. We had the convention here before.
That's right.
That's right. But this is a big honor for our Gadsden, City of Gadsden, Craig Scott. So thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
I want to read this commendation. If I could ask the officer, Mr. Tim Humphries, and Officer from Rainbow City, Richard Roberts, if you would come and accompany him, please, and see here. Thank you, Officer Roberts. He's from Rainbow City. Thank you. On Thursday, June 9, 2022, Gadsden Police Officer Tim Humphries responded to a call at Walnut Park Elementary School due to a person attempting forcible entry into the school. That day, there were over 50 students and children at school for a summer literacy camp and a City of Gadsden Parks and Recreation Summer Camp. In addition to efforts by other law enforcement and school personnel on the scene, Officer Humphries took extraordinary actions to protect and preserve the lives of his fellow officers, students, faculty, staff, and the surrounding neighborhood. While this incident took place approximately one year ago, I want to personally thank and commend Officer Humphries and Officer Roberts for their heroic efforts and courageous actions. Officer Humphries likely preventing a more tragic outcome, and he is to be honored for his commitment to his calling to serve and protect. Your act of bravery does not go unnoticed, and we thank you for your selfless service to our community. And Officer Roberts, this also goes to you also. I know you're a Rainbow City police officer, but we want to thank y'all working together. But Officer Humphries is from Gadsden, so today's Gadsden, but you're part of it. You're one of us. We're all together. I see Mayor Taylor's in attendance. Where's Joe? Joe, come on up here, please, while we take this picture. And to Mayor Taylor, we want to thank you just from Howel and Public Works, allowing us to be able to continue our operation and not pay a hefty fine with ADM. But thank you for allowing us to borrow some of your equipment. Officer Humphries, this is quite an honor for us, and Tina King, and Chief Jaggers, chief, and our police forces over here, but we want to thank you for what you did and for saving these kids' lives. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Let's do it up here.
Okay.
I was about to say, space yourself.
Yeah. There you go.
Do we get Officer Humphries' family up here, too, please?
One more picture out there, y'all. One more.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the guys I work with every day. If it wasn't for y'all, I wouldn't be here. All the training that we receive enabled me to do what I did that day. By the grace of God also, that's what enables us to function every day. I'd like to thank my family, my mom, my son, my wife, Uncle Bobby, and my cousin that attended, and just thank you, everybody.
I'm going to ask our district attorney to make his way. I just saw him, Jody Willoughby.
Just wanted to thank Tim that he took a bad situation and made it about as best as it could be. You have some of those situations, that's just the way they worked out, and he probably saved a lot of people's lives that day, and we appreciate you.
I was not planning on speaking, so...
Oh, I'm sure you'll figure it out.
You know, you know I will. You know, unfortunately, I have the opportunity in my job to have to review these cases and see just exactly what's happening in moments that split-second decisions are having to be made. And I can tell you that as the community, and as your law enforcement partners around here, and as your chief, and as your mayor, and everyone sitting here, the training that you guys are receiving, that you're doing every day, that you're dedicating yourself to over and over and over again, it works. It played out. I've never seen a more fantastic showing of training and what it can result in, in not only saving your fellow officer's life, but possibly saving many more of our students and teachers and other folks in this community. And Tim, I've been proud to call you a friend for many years. I think we started right here in this courtroom.
Yes.
As I was doing public defense work in the City of Gadsden, and Tim had worked with court, and I believe was the FOP president for a while, and we... Or PBA, excuse me. Is that right?
I was with the PBA.
With the PBA, all right. And Tim and I got to know each other really well. We tried a lot of cases together, and I've always been proud of what our law enforcement does in this county. But it's moments like this that really allow us to reflect, and, Tim, there's really not an honor that we can give you and Richard, you as well. I know, obviously, you were at Walnut Park as this or other at that moment, and intervened into a crucial situation. And to both of you, there's not enough awards, there's not enough thank yous, there's not enough thank yous for any of you guys in the room and gals in the room that are wearing the badge, that are wearing it proudly, that get up and run towards the fight, run towards the fire. Not everyone's in here doing that. Not everyone in here signed up for that. So for those of you that do, those of you that get up every day and you continue doing it every day, and it's thankless, you're generally disliked by people in the community, and harassed, and things of that nature, this right here, this moment right here, I wish everybody would just soak in and really know what these guys and gals are doing, that are wearing the badge, that are honoring the badge, and they're honoring the profession of law enforcement. So for that, I thank everybody in the room, but thank you, Tim.
I knew he would.
Tim, I want to just say, from my office and to all the other officers that are here present, this is in honor of you. If you know him, I've gotten to know him. He's always happy, he's always grinning, he's always saying something that is always a happy statement. There's enough negative out in the society and out in the community about our law enforcement, but to Officer Roberts and to Rainbow City, thank y'all for your cooperation and partnership. But to our Gadsden PD, thank y'all. I'm a strong supporter of our Gadsden PD. When something happens, I make sure I contact them as soon as I know about it, and to our fire department, but we can't thank you enough for what you did. In the military, we have something what we call ARs, after-action reviews, and we talk about the scenarios of how they would have happened. All I can say is, could you imagine if we had a situation where we're talking about the other situation that you hear on the news, of the unfortunate situation? So that was just a second away from happening if it wasn't for these two officers. So thank you from us, and from the mayor's office, and from the council, and for the citizens of Gadsden.
It truly is kind of a surreal moment. Just thank you, Mayor Ford, for recognizing our officers, and thanks both of these gentlemen for what you do. And, Jody, thank you, district attorney, 24-hour-a-day job, just like everybody else in this room. But you guys are the backbone and the heart of our city and of our county, and I don't want to miss the moment. You know, it's been a big week, real positive things happening in Gadsden and in Etowah County. But Mayor Taylor, I want to offer congratulations to you and Rainbow City on the Challenger Center. That is going to be a game changer for our students, for not only our county, but for the whole region. It goes into the ultra-safe nuclear project, where that's going to be a game changer. And don't miss the opportunity to see how we work together. I see my friend Chief Yancey, who I've known for quite a few years, and congratulations on being named chief, and I don't want to, hope I don't leave anybody out, but there's a fine group of folks in here today. It's grateful, I'm grateful to see the Rainbow City here, and to see you guys here, and for your officer being the SRO at a Gadsden City school system, that we don't need to miss that either. That's how our law enforcement works together, to protect our county, protect our citizens. And this is, you know, we are one group. We're the smallest landmass county in the state of Alabama. We all know each other. There's some invisible property lines that divide cities and things like that. At the end of the day, though, we're all one people, and I think these two gentlemen over here proved that in a very, very strong way about a year ago. So I appreciate you bringing that to everybody's attention, Mayor Ford, and thank you guys again, and thank you for your families. Thank all of you for all the work that you do. It does not go unnoticed, and we are very appreciative of what you do for our city and for our county. Thank you.
Absolutely. And to the citizens, if you were going to run a stop sign now, be the time to do it. Thank y'all. Thank everybody.
Thank you. All right, that's... And they go to arrest them. That's right. All right, we'll...
We'll give a minute for the room to clear a little bit, and then we'll get back. You going?
That's right. We will continue with our agenda.
Good luck running everybody back in.
Like to continue with item eight is our unfinished business. Item eight is an ordinance amending City Code Section 2.2. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It amends the code to describe a new design for the city seal, adds language that the city shall have, and maintain an official logo and a flag. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Excuse me, President Back.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance 522.1, amended City Code Section 2.2, city seal, to replace the D with a period.
And we agree with that. We researched it when he was talking, and that is something we need to do.
Okay. All right, Ms. Nelson, I was in the middle of doing the ordinance. I want to make sure that we get this right, just so we don't... So now what do I do?
I believe the motion to amend would come before the motion to adopt.
Okay, all right. So there's a motion to amend.
Second.
And we got a second. Any discussion?
I just want to, one thing in general, I know this is just a discussion about the amendment, but I'll just take the opportunity to say this. Point of clarification to the citizens of Gadsden, I'd heard a couple of these boo-birds on social media talking about how the city seal looks flat, and they don't understand. I want everybody to know this, the city seal is just that, it's designed to be stamped on a document. It's not meant to be necessarily the image of the city. It is a formal transactional authorization of city documentation. So if it looks kind of one-dimensional, that's by design. It's a stamp. It's a press. So just want to make that clarification.
I appreciate that. That's well-stated. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to amend the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to amend the ordinance.
All right. And item nine, do we go back to item eight again?
We still have to make the motion to...
The ordinance says amended.
All right, we'll start, okay, so this... Now say that again.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution in a second.
Okay.
And did I read that into the public record, or did I stop?
I believe you did.
I did, okay.
I believe you did the explanation before we started amending and discussing.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Now, item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3516 for 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe LT for the municipal court. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended the bid be awarded to Donahue Chevrolet, and the amount is $61,306.50. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing purchase of playground equipment for the Gadsden Sports Park through the State of Alabama Omnia Partners Public Sector National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract. This authorizes purchase from Game Time in care of Struthers Recreation LLC, and the amount is $299,501.74. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that this, if I recall correctly, will be located adjacent to our Champions Field, which is a field that is being built at the Gadsden Sports Park to accommodate children with disabilities and special needs. This playground will accompany and complement that field, and it will be a playground that is designed to be accessible to all children, including those with disabilities and special needs.
That is correct.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to Gadsden Airport Authority. This reappoints Billy Billingsley and appoints Steve Reagan for terms expiring on July 31, 2029. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to Harrelson Avenue Architectural Review Board. This appoints Michelle Adams and reappoints Kathy Mylum and Kristen Phillips for terms expiring September 15, 2025. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing amendment to agreement with EEFS Company PC. This amends an agreement authorized by Resolution Number R-370-19 to update the Couso River Memorial Bridge repair plans and specifications to conform to ALDOT standards, including ADA sidewalk improvements and incorporate electrical components for LED lighting. The amount is $39,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 comes under the first readings. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 90-92 regarding begging or soliciting alms. This repeals the existing code section and replaces it with language addressing panhandling, begging, and solicitations. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 15 is new business.
Yes.
We have a couple, don't we?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I apologize, I was reading that previous ordinance. Okay, I got three actually items. Well, am I counting right? Yeah, four, counting the ordinance for the budget. So we'll start with, this is an ordinance that's been presented by the legal department to allow us for the property sale, 827 Chestnut Street, which is more commonly referred to as the Gunn-Bellinger House. Yeah, that's it. So this would be an ordinance authorizing the mayor's office to execute the sale of this property for $240,000 to Sandpiper LLC. And for those that are curious, I believe that is an LLC that is owned by Mr. Dave Cummins, who's a well-respected builder in the community. There had been a lot of concern about this, the future of this historic property. So in the interest of executing the closing tomorrow, I would ask that we suspend the rules and vote on this today to allow for the sale to go through.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, another ordinance routed from the legal department concerning city-owned property. This is Ordinance 2023-535, which would authorize the mayor to convey via sale of a property located at the Air Depot to organization Cook &amp; Boyd, who is doing business as Dairyman Supply Company, in the sum of $400,000. To be clear, the Dairyman Supply had already purchased a large amount of square footage in the old Air Depot owned by the city, and this will be in addition to the property they already own. So again, in the interest of the completion of the transaction, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this today under new business.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, this is actually two separate transactions, but, Ms. Clerk, would it be okay to ask for unanimous consent for consideration of both of these under one vote?
I believe it would.
Okay. Having said that, we are receiving a grant from the Alabama Tourism Department to help support several different programs in the City of Gadsden. The grant amount is $10,400, helps with supporting several, again, several different events, including the upcoming fireworks show. So I would ask that we have a resolution accepting the grant, and then an ordinance amending the budget, so that we can properly reflect the receipt of the grant. So I would ask for us to suspend the rules today and consider both of these under new business.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both the resolution and the ordinance as items of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for both items.
Move to adopt both the resolution and the ordinance.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both the resolution and the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President, I promise.
All right, thank you, Councilman Wilson. Appreciate that. Item 16 is department reports, committees, and boards. We have any of those? Mr. Matthews with our Public Works Department, thank you.
Good morning, it's still morning, I believe, with the council and mayor. It's a good day to be in the great City of Gadsden, got some good news. I want to announce that we received from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, the recycling division, they have awarded us a grant for $73,373, I believe it is, for this grant period. The state's been very good to us over the years. We've had, past few years, approximately a half million dollars in grants. Every February, we write, that's the grant writing period, and request funds, and they announce it in June. I was getting a little concerned because it was getting late in the month, but they came forward with it yesterday. Very pleased with that. I want to thank the mayor for his encouragement and support, and his staff, and it's truly helped us. This isn't a sexy grant, it's generally for facilities upgrade. We're going to get a forklift and some rolling gates that we need on our Henry Street facility. We've got these ugly barriers out there now, totes that had chemicals in them. And we're also going to be able to build a concrete enclosure where we pull recycling material out of our waste stream out at the tip floor. So all three of these items are very much needed. Forklift, again, that's an expensive item, but we're very pleased to receive that, and I just want to let the council know the good news on that.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Ford?
So I want to thank you, Howel. This is something when we took office, we met with the department heads every other Tuesday, and we encouraged them to fill out grants. Our office, staff, Brett, Tina, Ruth, John, Rod, all assisted the department heads, but Howel took this on his own, and this is stuff that we would have included in... And this is stuff that we would have included into the budget for next fiscal year. So by getting this grant through ADM allowed us to free up some more monies for tip floor and other things that are needed out at Public Works. So, this is huge. We want every dime we can get from Montgomery or DC. We also have another grant that's going to be announced by our fire chief, who filled out his own grant paperwork also, even though we do have grant writers working on grants for us, larger for the city. So Howell, thank you, and to Chief Reed, I'll go ahead and say thank you too.
Thank you, thank you, Howell. All right, Chief Reed?
I'm proud of Howell, but unlike him, our grant is a sexy grant. I have three grants, actually two grants and a partnership I'd like to mention. The first is we're working with workforce development to assist us in paying our firefighters, excuse me, paying our tuition for our firefighters to go to paramedic school and paying firefighters to go to recruit school. So I'm working workforce development and with Mr. Johnson about that, and we'll announce exactly what that's going to be at a later date. The forms that the mayor had us fill out for grants in a director's meeting one day, the fire department achieved $6,000 out of that grant from District 28, 29, and 30 to buy mattresses for the fire station, so that was able to offset funds. We won't have to spend that to replace mattresses for the fire station. But our big grant, me and a friend of mine, who is a grant writer, sit down and wrote a grant for the fire department, and we got $337,000 to replace air packs with the fire department.
Fantastic, congratulations.
Yeah. Way to go. So, council, president, you're aware, you and I talked last year about it, and you said that we were going to have to figure out a way to do it, we figured out a way to do it. So now the city doesn't have to come up with $337,000.
I congratulate you, that is outstanding.
Absolutely. And Derek from the EMA is going to give you all a briefing on the cooling stations for the remainder of the week.
So Mr. President, while they're swapping places.
Yeah.
So to the public and to the press, sometimes we get, I don't know, talked about with our discretionary monies that we receive as a council member and as a mayor. It's easier for the mayor's office, when they need matching monies, to secure for a grant for us just to help them through the mayor's discretionary account, thanks to the council for giving us discretionary money when we got elected, because I don't think there was hardly any in there. But that allows us to match for grants that you have heard today. One of the facilities was out of fuel, and they were having to use their personal vehicles at the museum to transport back and forth the art or to the schools, and we found that out, so we just transferred money from the mayor's discretionary account and made a donation to the museum of arts. So I want you to know your tax dollars are being well spent by the council and by the mayor's office, and we want to thank our department heads for what they're doing in filling out these grants. This is something that, I don't know if it's been done before, but that's something we discuss every other Tuesday. You heard the $6,000, that's $6,000 that we don't have to spend, because the firemen have to have mattresses to sleep on. So we want to thank you again, chief.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you. Just wanted to give a brief overview of the potential of extreme heat coming this weekend. We had a webinar this morning around 10:00 a.m. with the National Weather Service out of Birmingham. All of the counties to the west of us are already under what is called an excessive heat warning, and as we get closer to Thursday and Friday, we're going to go ahead and bank on National Weather Service issuing that for all of Etowah County as well. This weekend, beginning Thursday, we're looking at heat index of 102, Friday 108, and Saturday And then, as the week progresses, obviously, we will be working in conjunction with the National Weather Service and Public Affairs to push this information out to citizens so that way that everybody is aware. Also wanted to make everybody aware that, beginning Thursday, we will be having our cooling centers open. As of right now, we've got four cooling centers, well, six technically, and we are working diligently to confirm more. This heat in Alabama is nothing to play with, we all are aware of that. If you're outside, working, working out, anytime you're out in the heat, take frequent breaks, have some water, have copious amounts of water. Be aware of your signs for heat exhaustion and heat stroke. Remember those that may not have access to air conditioning, check on those, check on your pets. If the pavement is too hot for your hand, it's too hot for your pet's paws. And obviously, let's keep in mind of the children, make sure to check your back seats, watch them while they're outside playing, make sure they take water breaks as well. So our cooling centers that we will have open, first, Craig Scott, as always, it's a pleasure to work in conjunction with him, the Gadsden Public Library, all three branches will be a cooling center during their normal business hours. The Salvation Army at 1101 First Street will start Thursday through Saturday. The Freedom Center over in Gadsden will be open Fridays. The Hoax Bluff Community Center, Thursday through Saturday, and the South Side Public Library will be Thursday through Saturday. And I understand that people are trying to write all of this down, but we will have this information posted. We'll work with Public Affairs to get this information typed out and put on social media. That way, everybody can print it off, take a screenshot, and have that information at hand. So, thank you guys very much for your time, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to us at the EMA.
At these locations, do you have water, or are there things like that that are available?
Yes, yeah, all of the locations will be stocked with water. We actually delivered this morning to a few locations, water.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your work, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other department reports, committees, or boards? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, council.
Good morning.
I'm Jake Brinkin, Sergeant, Gadsden Police Department. I have recently been placed over the new task force that works street crimes, street crime level offenses in the city of Gadsden. Essentially what that is, is pretty much crimes that occur on the street level. It's no secret to the city or anybody in the city that we have a large population of homeless in the city. Today is more just an awareness. I pulled some numbers from the past month of just some arrests and various charges locations, just want to share with you kind of what we're dealing with. City Gadsden Police Department, from June 1st to June 26th, arrested 214 total people in the city of Gadsden. Thirty-five of those arrests were documented as homeless individuals, which, and they were charged with over 70 different charges. Which brings it, if you do the math, it's like 16.35% of the arrests we make, just, you know, just shy of 20% being homeless individuals, which is kind of concerning when you think about that. And then 50% of those arrests have multiple charges, so it's not that they're just sitting there intoxicated or lording, been asked to leave trespassing places, they're actually committing some other type of crime. The highest crime that we see that are being committed are drug-related offenses, criminal trespassing, occupying condemned dwellings, stuff like that. But more concerning, what we've seen over the past couple weeks are a little bit higher-profile type cases. We had an arson, where people were actually occupied in the dwelling that a homeless person set on fire. We've had gun-related charges, auto thefts. If I'm leaving anything out, I'm thinking of, you know, resisting of arrest, disorderly conducts, eluding police. It's not just that they're just walking down the road or taking a presidency in front of businesses and shops like that, they're actually committing crimes against citizens and doing stuff like that that's not good. And it's not all of them, just like everything else, you know. 1% of the community can bring a bad rap to the 99% that live there, and it's the same issue that we have with this. But it is a real problem that we're facing. I've only been in this job for, I'm working on week three. I'm learning, I'm trying to figure out, I don't actually have, you know, what the answer is. If you ask me, hey, how we're going to fix it, I don't know. Give me a couple weeks, we'll talk, sit down and figure it out. We're working on some stuff, but just kind of, I was asking up here, talk, give you a little information, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me at any time.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mayor Ford?
So, I want to, this is something that we've asked Sergeant Inchikin to address, we're not messing around. These aren't the homeless that need help. I want you to understand, the homeless that need help, that are down on their luck, we're helping them, and we're getting them to the right location. These are the homeless that are committing crimes, that are breaking in your houses, living in abandoned houses, doing drugs, selling drugs on the street. We just confirmed this last week that Rome, Georgia, had dropped off homeless individuals to our Salvation Army to Gadsden, Alabama, and they have a Salvation Army in their area. The gentleman we interviewed, and we're in the process of going through the legal department and doing what we need to do, the necessary steps, we're not going to tolerate this. We're not a central place to take care of northeast Alabama's homeless population. We want to take care of our homeless population and help them get back on their feet and work through our ministries and our pastors and our 501(c)(3)'s to help all of these people. They're our people, so we want to help them. But we're not equipped to handle Rome, Georgia's homeless population, and me as a mayor, I'm not going to put up with it. I'm going to have a conversation with their mayor, I'm going to have a conversation with their council, and their police chief, and they don't want to send another homeless individual from Rome, Georgia to Gadsden, Alabama, I can promise you. So I want to thank the task force for what you're doing, I want to thank you for your energy and for what we're doing, and I want to thank you for the creation of it and wait for good things to come, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, I appreciate that. Thank you, Sergeant, thank you for the task force work that you're doing and the work that's yet to come. Thank you very much. Any other reports, committees, departments? If not, we will go to council, may remark. We'll start to my left with Councilman Robinson, District 7.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. That was, this has been a great day, educational day for all of us, you know, starting with our nine o'clock meeting this morning with Superintendent Dr. Reddick. I enjoyed meeting with them and getting the updates on the school systems and meeting all the elementary school principals and hearing their concerns and needs and wants and what they have going on. I honestly believe, being in that room, that those principals have every, the best intentions, you know, they're great people and they're doing great jobs. Want to say, thanks to all the police officers that do what y'all do. I mean, y'all go every day out there and do that, so I mean, just unbelievable work, and we're always, you know, I'm glad that we're acknowledging these folks for what they're doing. I think that's something that wasn't done too much in the past, but now it's being done, it's awesome. Nothing really on District 7, everything up there is running smooth right now, which is awesome. Just, you know, just a couple complaints here and there, but we're handling that. And Mr. Craig Scott, our librarian, I want to congratulate you. I didn't get that title, what was that title, Craig? He's president of the Alabama Library Association. Library Association, well deserved, well deserved, congratulations.
It's a three-year commitment, it's president-elect, followed by president, followed by past president.
Yeah, you'll do great. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minotra?
I would just like to thank the newly formed task force for street crimes. I've had the pleasure of being with them twice in that period of almost a month, and they are the best of the best, very professional, and on both of those situations that occurred with homeless in both Walnut Park and the Mill Village in Alabama City, I just say, I appreciate everything you are doing and you're going to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just point of clarification, when Councilwoman Minotra said she was with the street crimes division, she was not in that 224 count that he gave us for arrests, she was actually voluntarily riding along with it. Want to say congratulations to our neighboring community of Rainbow City, it was mentioned earlier, that there was an announcement made that the Challenger Center, Learning Center will be located there in Rainbow City. Again, great news for Etowah County, great news for students in the Gadsden City school system that'll be able to experience that, and I think it just adds to the momentum. So, happy for them that they were able to get that project completed. Thank you again to the officers that were here today and recognized for their bravery at Walnut Park School last year, some of you, and to drive this point home, a lot of people in this community may not have ever even known that that happened, and if it wouldn't have been for the mayor's office acknowledging them, and as Councilman Robinson said, that's something that wasn't really done a lot in the last administration, and it's been such a breath of fresh air to bring these heroes and people who have accomplished great things, from students in our school system that were national merit scholars, to our law enforcement officers who are doing great things. It's just awesome to be able to get up here and recognize and acknowledge those individuals, so thank you to those officers for their bravery in what they did. And the last thing I'll say is, to the constituent that spoke to us during pre-council about some issues, we continue to look for solutions for this performance-driving issue that's going on all over the country because of these TikTok videos. It's happening in our neighborhoods, it's happening on our Broad Street. Anybody who's driven down Broad Street over the last six months or so probably sees the burnout marks in the middle on our crosswalks. It is something that every community in the country is working on a solution for, and we have some things in the works. And as the mayor said, we've got a lot of exciting announcements that'll be coming down the pipeline, but again, thank you for your leadership on that, and please bear with us as we try to figure that out. That's all I have.
Thank you, council. Councilman Avery?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. District 3 cleanup on this past weekend, June 25th, was a success. We want to give kudos and thank you to the Gadsden City School Football Team, Coach Ali Smith, and the other coaching staff members that came out. I'd also like to give thanks to SCLC president and those that came out, Ms. Kendrick, also the North Fourth Street Community Leader, Ms. Spears, and their participation. Mr. Robertson, and then that was a retired Marine Corps gentleman, I can't remember his name that came out as well, thank them for their participation, dedication, and we're looking forward to our next cleanup, which will begin at Valley Street. We was able to kind of beat the storm a little bit, and thank you, North Gadsden, North Gadsden Part of District 3, for all the efforts that you do to keep that community clean and making sure that we don't have to do those many efforts there, and so that we can work on some other things concerning that area, concerning District 3. Our next cleanup will be July 23rd, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. We'll begin at Valley Street and work our way down to 12th Street, and again, that's if weather permits, and hopefully so. We'll have a community call meeting on July 9th, there'll be updates on the time and location, so be on the lookout for that. And then, we will then follow that behind with our District 3, district meeting on the 18th, which is from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., and of course, we'll have that posted here soon. I want to applaud WMGJ on their successful event this past weekend as summed up the Juneteenth celebration, the great speaker that came and motivated the community. And then there was a lot of awards that was given out, so I do have, it was one given to the council for their contributions as it relates to the sponsorship, our fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. So the council did receive an award for their participation and continuous efforts as it relates to helping the Boys and Girls Club. Saturday, August 12th, 2023, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the venue at Couso Landing, there will be a parent symposium, our Parent Symposium 2023. The registration is already up. If you go to my Facebook page, we'll have how you can go ahead and reserve or register for that, and then we'll have other ways that you can also register for that event if you do not have, I guess, website access. Thank you for the update with the cooling stations, if the community, if we definitely get that information out. And then, and as well as our police officers, the task force for their continuous job when it relates to everything that they are doing, when it relates to, of course, the crime, and then also especially our exhibition-driving events these guys are doing. Tuscaloosa Avenue every weekend is a hotspot, just throwing it out there, and I know you guys know, and the times vary, and so I'm also just kind of notating those to kind of just pass along, because it's beginning to, it's going to be an accident eventually, and it's definitely not going to be good for either the driver nor hopefully to someone who is in the area with children and so on. Craig Scott, congratulations. Craig Scott, congratulations, one of the best librarians I know. Continue up the good work. And then to Challenger Center, of course, congratulations to Rainbow City to piggyback off of everyone else without saying too much. Just a point of a clarification I just want to do. On this past week, there was two interviews that was done with two different news stations about the Sixth Street Pool. I, as the councilperson of District 3, did not invite those parties to come and do a story on the Sixth Street Pool. I did not initiate it by any means. From my understanding, someone in the community did so. I was called each time to participate and giving my feedback. So I wanted to make that clear, but also, I also agreed with the city engineer on what was needing to be done. I didn't vary from that or put any extra to it to make it worse or whatever the case may be. And so whereas it seems that there is friction or there's some craziness going on up here, I have deep respect for the city engineer. I have respect for each and every person on this díaz as it relates to their district and their job. And so again, to those that are hyper-activating the situation, and it seems to be put on me, I'm okay, I'm a big boy, I have thick skin, it's just no problem, but what I like to do is take these moments to make sure that the true story be put forth and put out, and so that we'll have an understanding that I did not. However, that is an important piece of District 3. It's also an important piece to the city of Gadsden. And so hopefully, here within the next couple of weeks, that the mayor's office will be open to have discussions with me, and then as well as the council, as we kind of maybe discuss this matter, to bring a solution to this problem, because it obviously is a problem. But however, just to be clear, I did not call anyone to bring this story forward. It has been something that has been going on for many years in this community, but I would love to be a part of the solution, and of course, not to continue to make this a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Latham?
For the sake of time, let me just echo the words of the appreciation and thanks and congratulations of council members who've already congratulated and thank those in their proper place. We are grateful and thankful for the great job that you do, and we do give congratulations to that. I do want to make mention of the education-recreation meeting that was held this morning. Thank you to Mr. Reddick and to Ms. Miness and to those elementary principals who were in attendance. I think we got a better understanding of what the school system needs as we move forward in preparing for those new testing regulations that will, that our children will be facing with the upcoming school year. And so we look forward to continuing those discussions and really being active and lending our support to the school system. So thank you for those council members who were out, who were in attendance, and others who were in attendance as well for that meeting this morning. I'm going to make a statement, and I'm going to make it personal because of things that I hear on a regular basis, from day to day, week to week. I have chosen, I am choosing to believe, number one, that we're stronger together, and then, number two, I believe that the best is yet to come for this city. When you can sit down and you can have constructive conversation, we may not all agree, but when you can state what your feeling is or how you feel, and we can leave that meeting knowing that we're headed in a better, headed toward a better place, even with the police. Thank you for choosing to be good police, not just in certain areas for certain people, but choosing to really wear the badge with honor and do a good job doing it. I just believe that Gadsden is headed in a very positive direction. So I do know with the help of God, from my mayor, to the mayor's office, to our council, and all that make up this city, even those, I look in the audience and I see citizens who, I can't call your name right now, who've decided to, your classmate, what's his name?
Larry Suttles.
Suttles, who's lending a hand across the district, not just for one district, but for this city. It's an awesome thing to see it happening if you choose to believe and look at it that way. It's almost like looking at a glass that's half-full, you can see it half-full or half-empty. And so I believe that we're headed for a very positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. I couldn't agree more. Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. We want to announce the 4th of July fireworks will be taking place Tuesday. If you notice, they're trimming the median, the right-of-way along the river so we can have a better viewership and better viewing, so more people can park along there. We're going to close Broad Street Bridge. It'll be closed at 6:00 PM. Want to thank those for receiving grants again. We also want to congratulate Rainbow City for the Challenger Center, and I want to address the Sixth Street Pool and Colley Homes. So the people will understand, the Colley Homes is owned by the city of Gadsden but managed by the YMCA for lifeguards. They provided the lifeguards to facilitate that facility so it would be open during the summer. As you know, the YMCA is no longer at their current facility. I'm not sure what their status is, but they're no longer providing lifeguards for any facilities. The park that was torn down in District 3 was owned by the School Board of Education. It had nothing to do with the city of Gadsden. I had a lot of calls about this. I went down there and visually inspected myself, contacted the engineering department, the legal department, and found out that we did not own the land, that the school board owned the park. They chose to tore it down. They're a separate entity than us. We had nothing to do with it. I want to address to the residents of Colley Homes and Sixth Street Pool, I understand that there was a story that was encouraged and allowed and narrated to play out in the community and then in the media and on Facebook that might lead you to believe that this administration has chosen to neglect the Sixth Street Pool, which has been closed for four years now. We took office eight months ago, along with the current city councilman from District 3 and the other council members. To get that pool ready for summer, it would have began back in November when we all took office. We all started our job here the same day. I knew nothing about the pool being closed down until recently, at the beginning of summer, and we started receiving estimates. The estimates before we took office, two to three years ago, were in the range of $2,000 to $300,000. Our engineer got a new estimate, they are now in the range of $800 to $1 million. So it's not feasible to repair that pool in its current condition. I would say we all had the opportunity to fix that pool, including you and your district in District 3. We all represent the city of Gadsden, as I do also. To create a divisive narrative about Gadsden and echo it in the Birmingham and statewide media markets in the middle of June is not going to open that pool this summer. It just doesn't make any logical sense to wait until the middle of summer and start talking about repairing a pool that would take at least $1 million to repair. The councilman in District 3 is Chair of the Finance Committee, and I want to ask, would you please address this in your subcommittee, and the next week is July, and submit to us a report? Let me be clear, no one up here has any special claim on any district or any neighborhood in Gadsden. As mayor, I represent District 3, too. I talk to residents in 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 1, and 2 every single day. I don't have a special district logo to put on my clothes, but I still won more votes in District 3 than anyone else. Trust me, I know Gadsden, and Gadsden knows me, all of Gadsden. I'm not leaving a single district or neighborhood out when I say that. So I'm going to do something about this issue. In fact, I already have. We have drained and secured the pool, which really should have been done four years ago by the previous administration so it was kept safe. We have secured the fences where we have noticed that children have been crawling under the fence and, believe it or not, over the Constantina wire. Once we drain the pool, there's two feet of sludge in the deep end. They are currently, today, our public works, trying to get that sludge out of the deep end. We're going to fill it in and remove the fence. We're going to create a safe, accessible public park and work with the council members and the councilmen from District 3 and the residents from Colley Homes, along with everyone that resides in District 3. We won't charge access fees, as was before. We'll provide children and families in Colley Homes and surrounding neighborhoods somewhere fun and safe to spend their time during the good weather months. It may include green space, an updated playground, basketball court, and possibly a splash pad. We have discovered, after communicating with the city of Birmingham and other municipalities, if you haven't watched the news, there's a shortage of lifeguards. We've had an incident that we've had to address, that we had a summer camper that we had to address due to a swimming pool, and it's not in our city's best interest at the current time to build a swimming pool and have to try to recruit lifeguards. We will have a groundbreaking when it's ready, and I look forward to seeing children's and family enjoy the new Sixth Street Park for decades to come, because the district is not anyone's districts, it's Gadsden, and I'm going to do what's best for Gadsden. Like I said, about the out-of-towner who likes to come in here on Tuesdays just to stir the pot, don't let someone come in your neighborhood and convince you city hall is against you. Come see me, come talk to me. I live here, I represent you. I'm ready to fight for each of you, everything doesn't have to be us versus them. Don't buy into the smoke screens and soap boxes. We're going to do the right thing regardless of quality of representation you're getting from anywhere in your city. I will take action and move forward. And let me tell you, Facebook posts and media interviews, they ain't going to work with me. I agree with Councilwoman Latham, better things are to come, new announcements are coming. We just announced a plant with 250 jobs coming for the residents of the city of Gadsden. We're on the verge of announcing another plant of possibly 400 employees, and that is to come, hopefully. I'll make sure the work is done, and I'll make something real happens for your community. I'll leave the smoke blowing to the smoke blowers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Like to announce that the July 4th holiday falls on next Tuesday. The city council meeting and work session will be held on Wednesday, July 5th, at the normal times, 10:00 and 11:00. Changes in the garbage collection schedule due to the July 4th holiday are as follows: Monday's route will be collected as usual, Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday's routes will not change. Want to echo our library director, Craig Scott, Go Green. That's a private joke, he's a Michigan State guy, and that's their War Eagle Roll Tide battle cry. So thank you so much. Yeah, Go White, Go Green. So we're proud of you and for the job that you do day in and day out, not just being the president of the state association, but for things you do that, the Vo ad and stuff, you're one of the busiest guys in town, so thanks for, thanks for your dedication to our, to our city. We passed two resolutions today to sell property, $640,000 total. I haven't kept a run in total, but the mayor's office and his administration has sold, it's in the millions of dollars of city property in the short eight months that they've, that they've been in office, and I think that's a smart thing to do. It's good management of our city's resources, and you're generating income for the city that you're reapplying into the city to help grow the city. And speaking of helping grow the city, you know, the announcement last week, UltraSafe Nuclear is a game changer for not only Gadsden but for the whole northeast Alabama and certainly for Edgewall County. So a big thank you to David Hooks at our Industrial Development Authority Office, big thank you to Mayor Ford and his team for the aggressiveness that they showed in recruiting businesses to Gadsden. It's, and I agree 100% with Councilwoman Latham's perspective, that good things are going to happen, and I think the best is yet to come. So with that, I wish you all a great day, have a safe 4th. We'll see you back here next Wednesday.